All right, we're live.
All right. It is now 6:32, May 15 for the Select Board meeting. We're gonna open as customary with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Dave Hemingway, Chair of the Select Board.
Marla Harris.
And so we are all here. Brief announcements, of course, was the audio system and why you'll hear us, or at least me, speaking a little bit more like this tonight. Do we have other announcements today?
I don't have any announcements.
All right. And I think that covers it from me for the moment. So that moves us into our public hearing portion, which, Russ, do you want to fill us in on to start with and give us the basis that we're talking about?
Well, so it's Planning Board, Public Hearing, so Planning Board's gonna handle this one.
Uh-huh. Well, perfect. Then let's have Planning Board Chair come on down and run their own public hearing.
But basically, this is Emmett made a request to do some work on Bashin Hollow and Garrish Road requires a public hearing because they're both scenic roads.
Okay. So this is the way that's gonna work, is Emmett's gonna present what he's gonna do. We're gonna discuss it among ourselves with the Planning Board. Any questions? And then we'll open it up to the public. Public can answer questions after that. You're up, Emmett.
Sounds good.
So on Bashin Hollow Road, as you turn off in Deer Meadow onto the right, there's them three rocks that stick way out, and there's one on the left. And over the last few years, I've had a lot of people ask me about getting rid of them. And the police chief has talked to me about that as well. People get too close and knock the hubcaps off, and I guess you guys have been down there a few times for...
Accidents.
For stuff. So that was a request from a lot of people. And while I have the machine this summer, because you have to rent it for the week, that would be great to do that. But if it doesn't happen, and it doesn't, then it's all good. But I've done my part on trying. And then up in front of Cliff Brokus, there's three or four ash trees that have been dead for the last three or four years. And once a week, we get a call to go up there to throw the top out of the road, and it's about the cost of town money, and it's getting old because we've got better things to do than to chase up there. And then you get up there, and somebody's already throwing it out of the road, but you get called, you have to go check it. So that was my request on the Bashin Hollow, on the Garrish Road. They're right directly across from where the brokers used to live. They're not marked to be cut. I think Asplin or... The Eversloss went out through there a year or so ago and cut some stuff on the other side of the road, but they didn't take them. So that's all I'm asking to do.
Cluff stand one?
What's that?
Cluff stand one? You want to get rid of those?
Oh, I don't, that's a, I don't, I'm gonna pound them. I don't, Cluff stand, and that's not a scenic road. And everybody can't wait. There, we've been up there working and...
Are there any questions from the Select Board or the Planning Board?
Having met other cars at some of those rocks in the winter, I look forward to them not being there.
The road is...
From the public.
Oh, I have a question. The, right in front of Nancy's house, there's a massive big ass tree when you try to do that turn to go down.
Nancy Rideout?
Yeah. Are they ever gonna take that big tree down?
The stump?
Well, no, it's, there's a stump and then there's...
Is it the raptor tree?
Yeah. Because when you try to make that right, I know I haven't been here very long, but everybody hugs that corner to come to make the left, and there's this huge tree, you just can't see around that corner.
I guess I...
Yeah, you've talked about that tree, but we were told by certain people on that road they did not want that tree cut, because they consider it a raptor tree.
Okay. I don't...
This is like a...
What's a raptor tree?
Well, it's like a, just a tree that the birds like. Do you know what tree?
I'll take the tree down.
Birds call raptors.
Okay. I'm pretty sure that's the tree.
Yeah, no, I, we can take a look, I mean, if we're gonna do that, then we'll have to come back and get another...
Yeah, just look at it.
Do another...
Hearing?
Yeah. But I don't want to get too carried away all at once.
No, I know it's a scenic bypass, but boy, does that road get a lot of traffic.
It does, because everybody uses it to go to the dump, and I mean, it's busy. We don't grade it on the days the dumps open because you don't get anything done.
Any other comments?
When was the timeframe for this one? When did you plan on doing this?
What, to pound the rock?
The rock on Bashin Hollow.
It all depends on when I have another job lined up.
Can I hear your name?
Dennis Moore.
Sometime between now and first snowfall.
Okay, if there's no other comments, we'll close the meeting. Do we, hearing is a hearing. Do we have to do a vote?
We didn't get the public, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is that, those rocks on Bashin Hollow, are those on the land that Ben owns the right to? Do you know what I'm talking about?
I think that's on my land.
Okay.
You're the man that bought the house from Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is on your corner. The one on the left is on your side too, but it is in the right of way.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that whoever owned the land and...
Yeah, the rock is mostly in the road.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. That they would be notified.
Yeah, no, no, I'm glad you're here.
Yeah. I don't know about the brokers, because...
Well, they, I think they sold all their stuff.
But they don't, they didn't sell the land, I don't think.
On the other side.
I don't think so.
I'm not sure, do you?
Yeah, I mean, maybe you would want to contact them.
Yeah. No, I don't care if the trees stay, but if somebody gets hurt, I've just brought it to somebody's attention. I know the school bus doesn't travel the road, but it, and I don't mind charging it hundred bucks an hour, if it's three hours minimum, it's 300 bucks every time I run up there. I'm good with that, I'm just trying to save the town some money.
Yeah. It costs that much to cut them down.
Right.
Yeah?
Were you also gonna do some ditching this year?
Not, 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 not in the plan on that end. I think they're all pretty good, you know, they need to be done sometime again, but I don't, I didn't plan on...
And then I'll write a letter out.
That's fine, I was just curious.
Yeah, no, no, just that, just that little bit.
I can write a letter after this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any more public comments? I think we have to take a vote to...
Which was the discussion, and so is that Planning Board vote?
It's the Planning Board vote.
Okay, Planning Board vote?
Planning Board vote. So we have four of our members here today. Would you step in for one of our absent members? And someone care to make a motion to approve?
Yeah, we have an alternate.
I'll make a motion to approve to, you know, cut the trees and crack the rocks, get rid of them.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say raise your hand.
I don't.
Aye.
You're part of the Planning Board.
Am I supposed to be sitting? No.
I forgot.
How could you forget me? You're shit!
I must say.
All right. So is there anything further for us with that public hearing?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Are you all set?
I'm super excited.
So at 6:42, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and move on to our old business, which is the Town Hall maintenance, the fobs and such.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The trees will be soon removed. So we have the fob project that I've spoken to you about before. That is the only thing left for the Town Hall door project. The original quote we got to install the fobs downstairs and upstairs was 16,766, which I thought was awful. So I asked him if he could sharpen his pencil and give me two separate quotes so I knew how much the downstairs was and how much downstairs was. So he slightly ran the pencil by a pencil sharpener. The downstairs round is 12,908, and the upstairs is 37,5784. So, you know, we're talking, we're gonna be talking like a thousand dollars.
Wait, he said 16, oh, okay, broke it down. Oh, yeah, they broke it down, I see, so that was all the ones.
Yeah. Yeah, the first one was for the hall.
It looks like you're dealing with, no matter where the location is, approximately 2,000
per door.
Yeah, so technically, I know it's a scenic road, but I don't know.
And so if it's just the two access doors to get to downstairs, then you have the cheapest possibility. If you're doing all of downstairs, which is the most secure method, the most appropriate for access management to, for example, the vault and the clerk's office where there's lots of vital records and other stuff, et cetera, then you're looking at that middle code. And then if you're adding up here to make it easier, more convenient, and cheaper if there's an issue, and not provide access to the entire building when we rent out the hall, then that's the most expensive.
He explained to me that for these doors up here, especially the front doors, they need to have a different type of lock, and also in the event of a fire release. Also, the wiring would have to be a consideration.
And that's all, that's included in that top code, right?
Yes, it is, in the hall, yeah.
So, so more or less, the fob for downstairs is 12?
12, 908, yeah.
And then to include, both of these doors?
Yes.
And then to include both of these two, both of these sets of doors adds the other three, which is...
In addition...
I'm of the opinion that if we're going to do it, we should do it all correctly, so it's all one system, it works together well, and it's all easily managed, especially whether they're, especially when we're dealing with something up here and no longer having to give a key that will also get them in bypassing all of the stuff downstairs.
How much is our budgeted number for this?
We budgeted, what, 10 or 12?
For the door project, we budgeted 15.
15. So it's a little bit more than what we...
We have nine left in there.
When you scare the sign, it wasn't...
So it's a little bit more than what we had budgeted in the ARPA fund, but we still have, but we also...
We spent 6,000 already up at the doors. 15,000 for the doors.
So there's about 10.
So we've got about nine left.
Nine to 10 that's left.
So where would the money come from?
Still ARPA funds.
We have a little, we have some available in our, it looks like it's a thousand dollars that is not accounted for yet. So we could use that, or we could go in the townhouse for the Town Hall.
What happens when we rent the Town Hall downstairs? I don't know how that works, they just...
So with the fobs, without the fob system at all, everyone gets a key, gets access to the building.
To go on.
And there's more.
With the fob system, if we don't do this, that same key will still get in through the normal door downstairs because it's the physical one. And so that will still get them into downstairs from the outside.
But not the office system downstairs.
Well, correct. And then if we have the fobs for everything, they get a little electronic fob that only allows them access to here and the kitchen area.
Oh, okay, so that's kind of...
One nice thing about the fobs is, right now, we ask them to drop the key in the box.
Yeah.
And we've had very good luck with that. Although, if someone...
The thing is, we're gonna pull up through here, and according to everyone, we're gonna change trees.
Yeah, that's how, that can happen.
Is it a possibility that you can lose track of where the key is?
Yeah, I agree.
So, at least with the fob, you would just go on the computer and...
It doesn't matter whether we get the land or not.
Yeah.
Oh!
Disengage their fob.
Dee, that's, that's the thing, that's probably what the fobs will be.
Oh, okay.
And you can restrict it to anything you want, you can turn it on and off with a bunch of the computer.
Oh, okay.
So you can charge 25 bucks as a security deposit for each one, and when they get it back, give them back their 25 dollar check.
Okay, that's nice, because I'm not, I'm not one of those kind of...
These are the fobs that we have to get in and out of the firehouse. The other day, the other day, I couldn't find mine, so we deleted it off the thing, and then, it's on my nightstand, it just got out of my pocket somehow, but if I had dropped it somewhere, I mean, it doesn't say what it goes to.
Yeah.
But nothing's written on there for firehouse or anything, but...
And exactly what Emmett just said, which is, if it's left there, if it's a physical key, they still have access until you change the locks. Something like this, you just remove it, and it's gone.
Right. And nobody has, but I mean, you can't go make one of these unless Dana makes it in the thing to get in and out. Anybody can run to the hardware store and make up a key on the way by.
It's kind of like a hotel room. Is there a country song?
But, and then, if somebody gets done, or whatevers, or whatever, you don't have to, you just delete that, I mean, that card costs a couple of bucks.
Yeah.
And isn't it awesome to track who comes in and out?
It does. Every time, every time this is swiped...
Keeps track of it?
It, your computer come right up onto the computer and, you know, they'll tell you what time...
That's a good thing in this day and age.
What time they came in, I mean, it doesn't tell you what time they leave, but it, whatevers, and it's like I tell people, you open up the door for six people behind you, you're the one that opened the door.
No, that's true, in this day and age, it's a lot different.
Don't leave me in charge of that.
So, and it's worked great.
Thank you for explaining that to me.
And that's what we're gonna be doing, something like this.
Yeah, so we're gonna be doing that with the fob system. The question is, do we cover the bare minimum downstairs, all of downstairs, or basically this building?
Which is the extra three grand, in a sense.
Yeah.
But most of it's by ARPA funds.
Well, all of, all of it can come from ARPA funds. It's more than we had budgeted out of ARPA funds, but we have more in the ARPA funds that is not yet budgeted for.
I think we should use the ARPA funds before they want it back.
They've actually been talking about that, because that's one of the things towards the whole, like, debt limit thing.
Yeah, well, we better spend it.
Yeah.
For things we need, something that's not, you don't need to take out of the real budget.
So do we need to make a motion to move forward on it? I mean, I, I mean, the only other discussion would be, I'm just, I've never been a big, yeah, whatever, security type person. So in my mind, I'm like, oh, money on that, but it's already there.
I think if you decide to do it, we would like a motion, and also a motion of where to take the money from. I have to admit, I choke a little bit on this price.
Well, that's sort of, that's me, too.
Well, we wait a couple of years, and we'll be choking a lot more on a price.
Well, you have a coin, unfortunately.
That's what happens, why we keep them.
You'd probably have to replace half of the system in order to make the new one compatible.
Right. Well, I'll make a motion, and I think we should take it out of the ARPA funds.
For the...
For the whole project. Yeah, right, the whole project. Miles will do it, it's only gonna get more expensive.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks for informing me what it is.
Oh, yeah, no, it's a great thing. I mean, if I came in the building at midnight, Dana could look in the next morning and say, Jesus, what was Emmett doing in here last night at midnight? No, but it's...
But it is, but it's, and I hate to say it, this day and age is so different from 25, 30 years ago, too.
And then you go, I'll get a card.
Oh, me too? Oh, jeez!
Now, with the, the system that you're getting, will it just be a card system, or will it have a four-digit with a pound on it as well? Well, that's an excellent question, Emmett. I don't know what a four-digit with a pound is.
Well, no, for ours, you can scan it with this, or you have a four-digit number, you don't have your card.
Oh, you mean you punch it in without the card?
It, it's like, you know, you wake up in the middle of the night, you pull your sweatpants on or something, and Jesus whiz, the card, you still have to get into the firehouse to respond.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, if I can find out. Ours doesn't have it. Ours just, if you don't have your fob, you ain't getting there. So if you forget your pants, you can't get in there.
Maybe that's a good thing.
Well, the car comes with a pea shooter.
Well, we're lucky, because all we had to do was open the door and went through the Sally Port, so we can get in it one way or another.
Yeah, yeah.
So, no, I just, I didn't know.
I think, I get what you're saying.
It's listed as a proximity and/or code indoor/outdoor reader, but I'm, I'm not sure whether we'll have a standard code or not plugged into it.
Well, everybody would have a different code. It wouldn't be just one code, because then...
I think that's a very good question.
Couldn't track it. I was just curious.
Okay, so what, what did you call it?
I actually prefer it not being there because of security.
I don't think you need to, it's gonna be an extra cost.
And there's not gonna be any, like, emergency to get into here that someone doesn't...
Unlike there, yeah, right.
It's not like we're getting into a...
You might need to see the records.
Well, at least a few.
Yeah, in the middle of the night, right.
All right, well, I'll talk with Jeff tomorrow.
Yeah, I think, I think it's not, it's not a deal breaker.
Yeah, Jeff, that's who I deal with, and it's very nice. Oh, he's been very nice to me. Yeah, very nice young man. He's helped me out. Yeah, and his son is nice, too, Alan.
Okay. So that moves us on to new business. And with the Board's approval, I would actually like to insert something here, which is our audio system, so I can briefly give you an update there and ask permission to do some stuff.
Okay.
All right. So the, basically, our amplifier back here, which runs our audio system and gives us our speaker output, died. I think it's because it was left on at some point for a very long time when no one was here doing anything. But regardless of the reason, it was ancient, and it has given us more than its full lifespan. There are a couple of different ways that we can go about replacing and making the system work. And the roughly two versions are, one, we can make it work kind of like a living room where you've got a standard AV receiver, you choose what thing you want, and you're good. The second option is to do it more like this was the old version of, which is for, like, live performance, so you've got lots of different mixing for all of the different channels, and things are separated out, and it's more for live performance. The benefit to the live performance is more flexibility. The downside to it is there's a lot more to deal with and to adjust and/or to go out of setting and so on. I'm estimating, based on just looking at what is supposedly in stock down at Best Buy, that like 350 to 450-ish range for the AV receiver is what would work well for what I would expect us to put here.
And then we fix it so that the speaker can hear us.
Right, so all of these speakers would work off of our mic system, as well as with the projectors, computers, the DVD.
For 450 bucks.
Yeah, that 350 to 450 range. And if I go the live performance route, I'm guessing I can get that for as little as about 500, might be a little bit more, if I go down to, like, Guitar Center or something in Manchester. My suggestion to keep it easier is that we go with the AV system, because not only is it probably about 50 to 100 or so cheaper, but it should be a lot easier, because I can stick a label on it and, like, push here if you're gonna play a DVD, push here if you want to use the microphone system.
So it'd be easy for the ones to operate it, too?
Correct.
Okay, so I make a motion.
So that's, I don't think we need a motion, but I wanted to get guidance from the Board as to their pleasure on which way to assess that before I go do it and then request reimbursements from them for what I go pick out down there.
I look at it, and you can...
Actually, sorry, there is a third option, which is to ask Computech to figure it out and put something in for us.
It sounds like, it sounds like it's, it's at its last leg.
It's more than that.
Maybe we should probably have a funeral. But, hey, long story short, I think that you, you know what you're looking at, you understand it. I, I wouldn't want to even, and, and of course, I always liked the cheaper route, and so I feel like that I would say go for the, you know, the 350 to 400 dollar, and it sounds like it's gonna do what it needs to do, and...
I agree 100 percent. We have an expert right here, so that's what we lose!
So nusk, yeah.
Okay, so I will pursue that route and...
And we appreciate it, too, because to know that is huge.
If I'm, if I'm lucky in getting all of that together, then Marty will be able to use it Friday.
I was about to say, we're about to have a silent movie on Friday.
If not, he'll get the tiny little voices out of the projector again.
And that's not the movie title. Silent movie.
All right.
Silent night.
That moves us on to investment policy, annual review, and affirmation. We love it so much.
Yes, I enjoy this, nothing like a good investment policy. The, while I was working on the code book, I noticed that in the code here, it says that you are supposed to review this every year by May 31st, and I want you to know that it is not May 31st yet, and that we're not done.
I do.
I've spoken with this, and the treasurer's also supposed to review it. I have spoken to Trace about it, and we had a very small correction in that as far as updating the date with the, the separate investment policy that the trustees have. Other than that, she did not see any changes, I did not see any changes, and I did send you a copy, I'm sure you all read it carefully, and anyway.
The first time we went through it.
Yeah. But you, and you went through this last year, anyway.
We did.
You know, so.
Is this a motion or a signature for both?
I think it would be good to have a motion that would just make a, make a record that you reviewed it.
Okay, I would move that we reaffirm the investment policy after our annual review with the correction of the date as noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dave, I'd like to remove the next item, because I asked Russ to put that on, but I shouldn't have, because that's already done.
Okay, it's good news. That moves us on to Timberville.
Do you want to speak about that?
No, we just, somebody did a cut, they gave the part back, and we're just having you sign it so we can give them the bill.
So you have signatures you made on this sheet?
Yep.
You have signatures for the CAX collector?
Correct.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
I need a blue pen, no, I can't do it in red.
How about black?
Black's good, too. Okay, that's good.
Well, they only want you to... No, this is just yield assessment. I'm just making sure that they're appropriate names, these are the kinds of trees and so on.
And Russ, how did you come up with that? Did you take the middle road?
I took the middle road because they did not submit the timber assessment sheet.
Do you ever ask for it?
I always set it out with it.
Yeah, do you ever, do you ever re-ask for it?
I did not re-ask for it.
Sometimes that, that, I don't know if that's more like a wicked pain, but sometimes, sometimes they may not have gotten it, or maybe they, yeah, it's not a bad idea.
Is that where they tell you about the access was a problem or something?
Yeah, 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 because, because, there we go, and the size...
And generally, after they look at it, I look at it myself, too, so if it's like a class six road, I say it's not a good landing.
Yeah, or the size of the sale, too, because nowadays, it's not, I mean, granted, it's not a big taxi anyways, I don't even know, what am I?
That's a small one.
That is a small one, that's for that.
Just for you to sign and send back over.
Did you, oh, yeah, you did sign it. No, you saw, oh, yeah.
Okay. And this one was already sent in.
Well, they probably figured.
Well, I had a reminder that they needed to send it in, too, which is why it's almost good.
Well, they could, too, because that's a lot for... Well, they, they do, too, because that's a lot for personal use, too, isn't it?
Well, it's not just for personal use. They sold a bunch of it, too.
Okay.
They are, they did their twenty cords of personal use. The rest of it's all the stuff they sent.
Okay, that moves us on to correspondence.
Yes, correspondence. We have two.
The same percent.
Impact fees that are now six years old and we're required to give that money back. Both cases, the money that's there is slated for the transfer station. I called Hawkington and asked Kelly if they, because we know they're doing things with the transfer station, but they haven't done it yet and they don't have a deal and I don't have any way I can save this money the way it is. So I'm asking for a motion to return three hundred and fifty-five dollars and eleven cents to Robert Wolinski and three hundred and seventy-four dollars and ten cents to Spencer Lish.
Before I make said motion, what, why would this not have been used when, for example, they were getting the new trailers last year? Is it just that we didn't remember to ask about it or?
I don't believe they got trailers.
No, they haven't.
They haven't worked them.
Oh, I thought they got them.
Now they're.
Which is part of the problem. We don't have a bill, so we can't use it without a bill.
Okay, that makes sense then.
So, yeah. That, I was hoping maybe they had and I could pay, you know, use some of this, but, I mean, we're talking seven hundred dollars, but still.
All right, I would move that we return the impact fees as appropriate.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. At the last meeting, I, I noted that we had received a letter from the Department of Revenue Administration regarding the equalized value. And so I've given you a copy of that in your, your packet. And I'm hoping you don't have any questions about it because it's very confusing.
Jesus.
You know, it talks about the, they've, they've done a lot of mathematical calculations with utilities. However, I agree with their figures. Which is, which is good.
Yeah, right.
We also received, this is a letter, as you know, that's Close Pen Bridge. We filed for, with DES, a standard dredge and fill, Wentland's permit application. And we did get a letter saying they had received it and they have added it to the technical review queue. This is as we go along in this project for Close Pen Bridge. So we received a three-page letter telling you that.
And to briefly go back to the tax thing, just looking at their ratios and doing super averaging, it looked like it was somewhere around the sixty-ish percent. And looking at what we got from DRA for last year's tax season, it was, depending on which number you're looking at, sixty-two or sixty-four point two percent. So that not having changed dramatically is probably a good sign for us as we head into our final reevaluation year, when everything will be a hundred percent next time.
I mean, you're gonna have, it's always a shock to people when their assessments go up and it's that amount. I mean, it's a, it's a process.
But it always, it all goes out.
Yeah, yeah. It all comes up with the rate.
I'm telling you how obsessed you can be with the price of houses.
And, you know, and I hope that once we go through the reval, that it's good for five minutes.
Yeah.
You know, it's that type of thing.
Well, and hopefully, things are gonna change, too. I don't know.
But I think sales are slowing down.
Yep.
Well, because there's nothing to sell.
Although, there's not much to sell, although prices are.
Still stupid.
Unbelievable.
That's what scares me.
I don't know how people can afford a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house that is a regular house. We have a letter from regarding a ZVA case that Russ has provided for you.
My question about it, is there something that we're supposed to do about that or is it just?
No, that's just him notifying you of what, of what the, the decision was.
Okay.
Today I received the quotation from Granite State Solar, which is, Dave had spoken of before. The quotation's twenty-six.
It's not in front of me, but.
I think the previous quote, I thought you had said somewhere around twenty-five hundred, so this, this is about right. It's twenty-six ninety-two.
This is to replace the cell, the cell modems and so that things can actually report and then get taken care of.
And how come we're replacing them?
Because they were three G and don't provide any data back anymore. So that's why, for example, if you go to our public portal, there's no data.
Right.
And so once those are in, it'll backfill all of the data that's still sitting in the, the inverters and stuff across the street. And so it'll be accurate.
Was that part of their pricing of when we did what we did across the street?
You mean the original stuff?
Yeah.
As far as we can tell, there was never really a contract other than we're gonna install stuff.
Oh, oopsie.
This is what was spoken of, but I don't think it was put in writing.
Yeah.
So we all took, we figured it was done.
Much like the sign and making sure things are upright and so on that have been contentious in the past. But as far as we can tell, and I've had Dana search a couple of times and, and then I asked them, so what should we be expecting from, you know, for notification when stuff like this happens? And it's basically, well, we can set you up with another or a different email if you're not getting the notifications, but we already installed stuff.
We'll see if they left without me.
So they will, anything that needs like warranty type work, if we call them out for that, they build a company and it's kind of strict warranty work, so we don't pay for it as long as they're doing it. But that's really where they stop. So that for existing array structure. So this will allow us to do proper and full monitoring of what's actually happening again. Yeah. It fixes what should have been noticed and fixed probably a year and a half ago.
So they, for that work to start, they want fifty percent upfront. So I'll ask Wendy to cut a check and we'll do it at your next meeting. I have a bait. Mr. Russ, do you want to speak about that? Those are Karen's or?
Yeah, it's just campgrounds again.
More campgrounds.
No, just camp.
Are these people that are, all have left?
Okay. Is there other correspondence for us to?
That's the last of it.
Okay.
Forgot again.
What's that?
Another recent.
Oh, you went and got it? Oh, good.
Well, I forgot. I can give you another eyes.
All right.
All right.
He's gonna be missed.
Okay.
I agree.
Thanks. She's brought a red pen for the minutes.
The editor.
That's right.
That's right.
That's for anything else, but.
Where's your red pen?
He can hear you. All right, so that finishes correspondence.
Yes.
I did not get anything else really interesting for town as far as correspondence, other than I will point out that, and I mentioned this to Russ briefly, but NHMA sent out an advertisement for their training for all of the finances in town. And it's, I think it's an eight-week thing where it's once a week in a morning September, October timeframe. And so I wanted to point that out and make note of it so that we can get Russ scheduled into something like that. Because I know you were wanting him to pick, uh, be cross-trained more in the financial section.
I think it'd be helpful for him.
With a certificate of some sort as well.
Yeah.
Be certified.
For doing that.
Or certifiable, yeah.
That's good, see what you certified for.
That's all of us at this point.
I will look into that.
All right, so I believe that covers it for correspondence, which moves us on to public comment, which is Bill.
That's Bill.
Is that my turn?
It is.
If you would like to.
I mean, fight off the crowd.
First of all, let me apologize. I, I've visited some other select boards in the Merrimack Valley District and I was much more prepared than I was today when Dana was asking me a million questions. And for the others, I queued up an email and I would have burped it out to you and you would have had something to read after I called. So I knew your meeting was coming up and so my apologies for not being as prepared.
So let me quickly interrupt for one sec.
Yep.
Just, just to make sure, please introduce yourself with name and since I believe you're not a Webster resident, also a location of sorts.
Okay, good. So my name is Bill Hines and I am a Bosquin, New Hampshire resident.
Thank you.
So I've got, I, I printed out some stuff. I, I think. What we're talking about is Merrimack Valley School District. I know that, David, you're a little bit familiar with it because you sat with me at the annual meeting and I described some of the, the situation. Dee, you should be somewhat familiar because you, you negotiated some of the agreements. We're specifically talking about Andover tuition. I'll try to be as brief as I can. If I'm getting off course, please don't be afraid to ring me in because there's a lot to know about this. Bottom line is Merrimack Valley tuition's in Andover students. Andover's not part of the Merrimack Valley School District. The five towns are Webster is one, Bosquin, Loudon, Salisbury, and Pennacook. So we're, we're part of the cooperative. Andover is not. And Andover sends their high school students only to Merrimack Valley under a tuition agreement. The tuition agreement was just up for, for renegotiation and was renegotiated. And there's a little history there. I tried to convey it at annual meeting. It went badly. My performance was terrible because I wanted to try to recite the history so that people would have. And, and I was gonna be throwing daggers at the end, unfortunately, and I know there's people involved, so I chose not to really go for the jugular like I, I, like maybe I should have. But the bottom line is they've renegotiated an agreement. I think it's a bad agreement. That's not really what we're talking about today. What we're talking about is the previous fifteen-year agreement where the SAU did not properly bill for tuition students from Andover. And that spreadsheet details what should have been billed and what was billed on a per-student basis per year. I'm gonna leave you with a copy of the agreement. I found another copy. I'll leave it for Dana. It is, the, the guts of the agreement is really brief. It's only five or six pages that say, yep, Andover kids are welcome to come. You're gonna pay state average. And state average is a rearview mirror-looking number. You, you don't know what it is until you've finished a year and all the math is done. And so there's an initial calculation that's detailed in the agreement that says we're gonna take a guess at it by looking back three to five years and rolling forward two years for the budget. And then at some point, when the real number becomes available, you, we're gonna do a reconciliation, whether it was for Merrimack Valley or a, a credit to Andover, either way. So the SAU hasn't been billing according to that agreement. And if you look at what should have been billed and then what was actually billed and add it up in aggregate, only for the seven years which we have numbers, it's one point four million dollars there. And that still doesn't account for the last two years of the agreement. It will, it will clear two million dollars over the years that I have shown there that we know. I've been working with, you, you may know her, Louise Andrus. Sometimes, sometimes people say, oh, she's a friend and other people think, yeah, no, Bill, you should stay away from her because, you know, she's a foe. She, it's been very helpful. She is a legislator. She's filed a number of right-to-know requests with Merrimack Valley School District and there's a ton of information that has been collected, including the actual invoices, which you can look at and see what was actually billed. I think one of the hurdles that I've found here is people kinda don't believe what I'm telling them. It's like, no, that can't be. Like, you know, they're professionals there and they couldn't possibly have done this wrong. Well, they have. And I, I, it, it's hard because you have to throw people under the bus to, to, you know, to try to say that this is, was wrong and some people don't believe it. So, so what am I asking for you here tonight? I, we've discovered this and there's still two years left on the agreement, the existing agreement. Technically, maybe only one that we might be able to collect for under the reconcile clause of the agreement. And so I've asked the school board. I said, hey, why don't you invoke the reconcile, which is clearly spelled out in the agreement, and collect at least for the last two years in full, the way you were supposed to? And they've declined my request to do that. So my only option left is to come to you. I've been to Loudon. And I've been to my town, the town of Bosquin, who interestingly has a select person who negotiated the new agreement. And has used some really surprising words in an open session at, at Bosquin during a select meeting. She used the word criminal. And I have not used that word, but she used it. So she seems to be an ally to this and she's preparing to write a letter or had promised to write a letter to the, from the select board of Bosquin to the school district, asking them. I, I'm not sure what she's gonna ask them, but that's her gig, but she is up to speed since she participated in the process. So all I'm asking is to, for you to understand it. I've got a Google Drive that has all of the documents that we've collected via right, right-to-know request. You send me an email address. I'd be more than happy to send you that link and get you access to that. You can peruse whatever documents you want there on that drive and there's, there's a lot of them. So like I said, knowledge is power. That's my goal here, just to give you the knowledge that, that I know. And if, if you so, are so inclined, maybe ask some of the folks who represent the taxpayer or should represent the taxpayers that are on the board and say, hey, what happened here? So that's pretty much all I've got unless you've got any questions.
Regarding your point about documentation and the Google Drive, I would suggest that you take a generic public viewing link for that drive and go ahead and send that link over to our town administrator, so if anyone asks for it, he can just forward it to them.
Okay, yep.
Bill, what are you asking the board for?
I, I'm not really asking them for anything specific. I, I was surprised that my home community of Bosquin was willing to write a letter. That, that would be great. I, I think really where I come from on this is I want the taxpayer to be whole here. I, the taxpayers, in my opinion, have been short-changed. And that the Andover folks need to stand in the same shoes as I stand in and you stand in as members of the cooperative district. And they're getting a deal that, in my opinion, is way better than they should have gotten. There's more history here. I had, I didn't fill you into it quite so much.
But you're feeling that way because of what, you feel that they were not billed correctly. So when they signed up for the deal, for whoever did, however long ago it was, they signed up knowing, okay, this is what's gonna cost for a student. And for whatever reason, somewhere along the line, that went astray. Am I, am I understanding that right?
You, you're right. So Marlo, you're touching on the history. In two thousand and three, this agreement, the, the Andover tuition agreement was renegotiated. I remember the number. I was there. Dee was there. It was sixty-six forty. About two weeks after that deal was struck, hit the newspaper that Deerfield students were coming to Concord for eighty-nine hundred dollars. I'm thinking, we're not that much, we shouldn't be that much less than, you know, we're not that much worse, I guess, than Concord. So anyway, the deal got done for that price about midway through the agreement, and you may remember this, Dee.
Oh, jeez.
The, it, it became clear to the board, yeah, this isn't tracking our costs. And we asked Andover, said, look, can we come back to the table? We wanna sit down. This isn't tracking. We'd like to renegotiate. Andover said, probably pretty politely.
No.
No, you got a deal.
Yeah. Yeah. We made a deal.
Okay. So luckily, it was only a five-year deal. 2008, 2009, the deal was renegotiated. The board said, here it is. Take it or leave it. State average. We need to get paid back. And then, as the beginning of the agreement began to be implemented, the SAU, which remember, there's a conflict of interest here, and that's really at the root of why this is happening. The SAU services Andover and it services Merrimack Valley. And so, they, maybe feeling that they had an obligation to also represent Andover, said, well, you know, that's gonna be a big step, that first couple of years. Can we ease them into it? And the answer is, yeah. I spoke with Mark Hutchins, who was the board chair at the time, and he said, yeah, we, you know, we, I gave the SAU permission to ease them in a couple of years, certainly no more than five, to get them up to the full price that they were gonna be paying. And it never got to the finish line. They, the SAU continued to whittle the numbers. Unfortunately, this is on the revenue side of the ledger, so nobody pays any attention to the revenue side. It's not an area we can control. We all try to control the expense side because that's the only lever we can pull. And so, nobody asked, you know, what this, we saw the tuition line there. Yeah, that's Andover tuition and among other tuitions. And the number was a million bucks or more. It's like, hey, bonus. But we didn't know what was behind those numbers. And so, and unfortunately, as I wrote in a letter to the SAU and the board members, I'm mad at myself because I could have asked for those numbers, but I didn't. Because for all the years that I attended board meetings, the Dee, I was, I went to every meeting for a few years there.
Yes, you did. I agree.
And I got a tremendous amount of respect for the people that were there. You know, these people are really trying to save us money and do good. And I knew it was a little bit more work. They would have had to redact students' names and other things in order for me to ask for that data. So I trusted them, and I didn't ask. We've asked now. We've gone back a ways. They've had to take some time to redact personally identifying information. It took them a lot of work, and is probably, you know, the trust is lost now, in my opinion. And so, we're asking lots of other questions to it. Does that help fill in?
I think so.
The why? How did we get here?
Right.
So, yep.
I guess my only remaining question, since I think I understand what has happened at this point, and that there is the new agreement, which is the new agreement. What are you hoping or expecting to have happen going forward with this? Is it just that you're hoping that the board within, sorry, not this board, the school board, within the remaining portion of the existing contract tries to collect an extra $1.4 million or however much for the last couple of years? Or what are you kind of expecting or hoping?
David, I don't have any expectations specifically. I know that there's a process, just like here and everywhere else. We look forward a year. Our forward-looking budget is already produced. That forward-looking budget for Andover is already produced. So, for us to write them an invoice and say, here, pay up, we're gonna say, sorry, there's no money in the till. You know, they have a $6 million budget in Andover. We have a $46 million budget at Merrimack Valley. So, I don't know. The only way that I think something could happen there is to say, okay, we've identified what you owe us, whether it's the whole $1.4, or maybe it's just the next ensuing two years that we could try to collect. Whatever it is, it's something that, to the taxpayers of the cooperative district. I feel like the taxpayers have been left behind here, that there's nobody sitting on the board that remembers that they have an allegiance to the, yes, they gotta run a school. That's, we understand that, yeah. But, you know, the taxpayers, they keep, you know, they keep emptying our wallet, making a withdrawal every year, and we keep paying up. But, you know, this is an example where we negotiated a deal. It, why wasn't it carried up? And it wasn't. So, I have no illusions that, I'm probably a loser here, just like all the other taxpayers. But I'm hopeful that the board would at least take some action to try to offer a remedial action, and they aren't. I've asked them that. I've bugged them to the point where now they won't even answer my questions. It is, we take comments only in our public sessions. And I said, well, I've got questions, so I'm gonna ask them in form of questions you can choose not to answer. That was the last board meeting, the way it went down. So, whereas before, they felt some obligation to try to answer, and Seeley did, and Seeley's answer was, we really kind of wanna look forward. We don't wanna look backwards. And I explained, well, the reconciliation process is a forward-looking process. So, you know, if you, some reparation would, they haven't even really acknowledged that it's even happened publicly. So, that's, it's all about just trying to get the word out and let people understand what's there. You know, maybe you might choose to write your own letter and say, you know, what happened here, and, you know, why are you not trying to at least offer some reparations to the taxpayer? Is that helpful? Yeah. I have no illusions. You know, I've got a whole other host of things that I could talk about, the non-public part of it. I wind a little bit at that, the annual meeting, and kinda got off track a little bit with that, so I've kinda left that to the side. They took it into all non-public, so, you know, I did no chance, even if I had been paying attention, to form, or give them feedback about where they were going on the new agreement. The people that were there, that were negotiating the deal, were two Andover board members and two Merrimack Valley school board members. And this hadn't been done in 15 years, so there was really nobody there. Lori remembered it and was there. She was supposedly representing the SAU board. The SAU didn't need any representation. This was the two parties that should have been negotiating. And as you know, Dee, it's a detailed thing, and, but that's, you know, they got done. The board approved it. Annual meeting was our chance to weigh in as a public. And, you know, I would have had to gone for the jugular, and I didn't.
Yeah, because the annual meeting had to approve it as well, right?
Well, if you remember what...
Advisory?
Yeah, if you remember what the lawyer said, he said, it's affirming. So, the authority lies with the board. So, the board could have signed off even if we had voted no. But we didn't. But that's neither here nor there, because quite frankly, we want the Andover students to come. I don't, nobody, I'm not mad at Andover. They bring kids, I can tell you epic stories of Andover students that I went to school with there, Andover families. So, we want them to come.
We just want them to pay what they are supposed to pay.
We just want them to stand in the same shoes that I stand in as a taxpayer. That's all.
I don't think anybody might want that besides Andover.
Yeah.
But I mean, yeah, that's only fair. And I was on the school board a long time, and I know we negotiated, and I always thought it came out the way we negotiated. But I guess I wasn't, I don't know. I don't know how that happened. So, but I do remember, and I, I mean, I would think that, in my heart, I wouldn't want, I would think, Andover's not gonna get a bargain when we're paying for Merrimack Valley kids. That's how I would have looked at it. Why, that's a long time ago.
It was. It was, and people have forgotten. And one thing that Lori has pointed out is, you know, we were negotiating under false pretenses. We all believed when we were negotiating that Andover was paying according to the agreement that was provided to us.
That's exactly, that's exactly, I don't know where it dropped the ball.
And she said, we even talked about that in the negotiations. Like, well, we know you're overpaying right now because you had to pay us back, so maybe we can be a little easier now because we know you've been overpaying. They weren't overpaying, and they weren't made aware of that. I, so, I think that's maybe why the word that Lori used was the word that she used. She felt perhaps duped.
Because it's not fair. I mean, I agree. Merrimack Valley should be getting the money, they give them a good education. So, I mean, they're not gonna send their kids to other districts, we won't name, but...
You know what the board packet looks like because you've seen it. There's 50 pages of good news in every board packet.
It's true.
We think a lot of ourselves, right up until it's time to invite somebody else to come to our school, and then we wanna give, you know, give away the position. So, I, it's sad, but it is what it is, and I can't fix it.
Well, hopefully, this could be straightened out.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, I want some reparations. I want somebody to acknowledge, yes, this has happened, and we're gonna try to do something. Maybe they go back to Andover and say, look, this is, we negotiated this in bad faith. We'll stick with the deal, but we'd like to collect on some of this, so we're gonna add $1,000 a year, or something like that, per student, to try to collect some of it over a period of time. That would seem reasonable to me, but...
No, you're right.
I, I, I'm not, there doesn't seem to be. I go to school board meetings and I see a bunch of nodding heads. I really feel like the taxpayer's been left behind.
And I know that at one time, Andover could only, if I'm my rhymes right, they could only have some of their kids go, a small percentage go to Proctor. The rest had to come to Merrimack Valley.
I think it's 90% is spelled out against the agreement.
Yeah, I forget how many kids at the time.
Yeah, exactly. So, there you go.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you very much for the presentation and for letting all of our public, you don't see here, but we do have video that goes streaming and is recorded and up on YouTube for people to see after the fact.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate your time and all this.
Your email address.
Townadministrator@webster. We'll get it there.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment?
Sign's been delivered. It's in the fire station. Awesome. We got it last Wednesday? Thursday? Wednesday, Thursday. I had a disaster trying to get it in. That thing is...
What was that?
The sign.
I know, I heard the sign, but it was...
Disaster to get it in.
Disaster to get it in. Oh, okay, that's right. Because I didn't think I saw a sign.
You don't take a big electronic sign and crate it of one-by-fours with inch-and-a-half staples. We had to re-crake the whole thing with two-by-sixes and two-by-eights that Emmett had in his house, and that's the only way we'd get it out. But, no scratch on it. Looks good. We'll put the pad in.
Are you leaving it inside so it doesn't get weathered?
It's inside, yeah. We got it inside a fire station so nothing happens. We'll put the pad in probably next week. Dean, Phil, and Emmett are gonna do that. So, have that in. We'll start getting ready to go.
Awesome. With that coming along, and then the power out of the station, and then the driveway permit was filed, so we should be on our way very good with the safety building very shortly this season.
Happy camper.
Thank you for that update.
Yeah, short, sweet, quick, and easy.
All right. I know we've already been signing some documents, so I don't know if you wanna hand those out or not. I know we're gonna have some motions, and I'll leave the minutes for the last section of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Bye, Steve. Thanks.
Have a great night.
You too.
Why don't I start?
Get everybody out of trouble now.
Trust funds. So, this is my first year doing it quarterly, but because of the amount of money that we have forwarded on for this because of the bridge project and a few other things, I'd like to have a motion to ask the trustees to transfer some money back to us.
Is there one for ARPA and one for the other stuff, or is it all?
There's none. That's all trustees.
Okay, so this is all trust?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
You're gonna have to say all of those, one by one?
The only ARPA one we had was your taking the remainder of the BOBS out of the ARPA.
Okay. So, this is for the trustees of trust funds. Hopefully, the invoices still match order there. But, quickly, do the periphery to this. Yes, okay. So, I have to request the trustee of trust funds issue a check in the amount of $125,049.63 payable to the town of Webster to reimburse the town for expenses to be withdrawn from the capital reserve funds and expendable trust funds as listed. $118,672.13 from the Bridge Improvement Capital Reserve Fund for invoices from Fleece and Flower Farm. Invoices 7,100 for $1,080, 7,113 for $330, 7,114 for $330, 7,115 for $330, 7,116 for $330, 7,117 for $330, 7,118 for $330, 7,122 for $220, 7,131 for $220. And then invoices from Mitchie Corporation. Invoice 80650 for $7,403.20. Invoice 80651 for $73,273.20. Invoice 80652 for $2320, 80653 for $2320, 80654 for $2320, 80662 for $2320, 80663 for $2320, 80664 for $4,173.20, 80665 for $3,023.20, 80666 for $13,773.20. Then invoices from the HB. Invoice 0404269 for $5,910.19. Invoice 0406560 for $7,499.94. Then also to withdraw $4,062.50 from the Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund for invoices from Fleece and Flower Farm. Invoice 7121 for $535, 7123 for $1,765, 7132 for $1,762. And lastly, to withdraw $2,315 from the Highway Land Building Capital Reserve Fund for invoices from Fleece and Flower Farm, 7102 at $2,315. We all good on the numbers?
I think so, yeah.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
No, I don't wanna pay any of it. I mean, this is like at work. I'm like, ah.
We already paid for it. This is to get it back.
Right. True. That's right. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good thing somebody keeps us alive.
I have a letter. Mary Welch would like to go to boat, be trained to sell boat registrations. Register boats to sell boats.
She'd probably like to do that, too.
Anyway, the board has to okay her to do that.
Everything has to go.
Yeah, sure.
Do we have the deed one, too?
That's coming up.
Okay. I just want to... It's gonna take a minute.
Yep.
Oh, yes. Ah, for boat agents. There we go.
You know, because that's, it's a crazy thing to do. Register a boat.
Thank you. Then I have the tax collector's warrant for the first issued tax bill, asking her to collect $2,810,576. And I was trying to have her have it due tomorrow, but obviously, she wouldn't let me do that.
And that's what, a 30-day period?
It will be due July 5th.
July 5th.
So she's given them, as per the law. It has to be at least 30 days.
And that's definitely more.
It's a few more, so.
Well, I'll sign that.
Yeah, that's how we get paid.
I know. I know, girl, I know, right?
Then I have two release deeds that I mean...
We get so much for this job.
Russ, no worries. The first deed is for the sale of the property on Guideford Hill Road to Granite Roots Holding LLC. So, I'll, I'll sign the witness afterwards.
Okay. Oh, he's getting up with his stamp, watch out. He comes, he's getting some ahead.
Russ is gonna sign the next.
I'll just go down, I'll meet him at the end.
Okay, meet at the end.
Come down on this side of the wall there, Russ.
Then I have another one for the piece of property that you sold on Cornfield Road to Martin House.
And just for the record, I will point out both our release deeds.
Yes.
Who's gonna witness?
I will, being as witness, I'm watching.
My section's not even on the same page, man.
I just do it, the attorney sends me.
Well, this 15th day, well, it's May, right?
May, yep, yep.
A month long.
It's good to ask, rather than having to have Dana go reprint.
Yeah, don't do that, I would cry.
Little man crying, huh?
I have, I paid the visa bills, and so these are for you to prove the money we withdrew from the checking account. Mine is always the biggest because of the phone bills and the lights.
Well, stay off the phone, will you?
I know, and shut off the lights.
Yes, right. Come on, that light stuff.
This one is payroll?
Oh, sign that.
No, oh, we're not even on this one, I was about to say we get paid too much, but.
Well, we thought that, so we had removed you.
You're gonna hold that back, aren't you, my friend?
We, we get paid too much, we're not even on that.
The second payroll of the month's always the easiest one. Thank you. Then I have a, a manifest for one check that's coming out of the police revolving fund, and Wendy had it on a separate manifest, which-
Do we need to make a motion, since it's not a normal thing?
Well, it's, I don't think you need to make a motion, I think that will cover it.
Okay.
How was it down this way? Yeah, right?
I feel fancy, like I should be giving a presentation for the board.
This is from the ARPA account for the remaining balance on the sign, which you have made a motion and passed.
Well, that sign will wake everybody up.
Thank you, Russ.
It's working.
I'm not sure about that, Russ.
It'll be hard for anyone to say, I had no idea that anything was happening.
Well, not that they don't drive by here, though.
This is the regular manifest, which is all the other bills, I have the bills here. If you have any questions and would like to look at them, I will pass them forward.
You can look at them, I'll just-
I think it's quite interesting.
I love looking at them.
On there, in there is the April payment for the school. So we are, for some reason, we didn't pay them enough.
$382,853.
And I need the tax money so I can pay the May payment, I don't have enough money to do that, but I'm-
It's coming.
I'm pretty sure I pointed out that, that there was a large one in there for April, 'cause I usually make note of it when it's in here.
Well, maybe that was the March one, Gabe, I'd have to look back, but we-
So we basically now, now we paid for White Plains, and, well, the rest of it's in here.
All the ones that you've just approved for the trustees, a lot of them are in there.
Yep, and the school payment.
Although Emmett, we do not have a bill for Neil Daniels, for the contractor, yeah.
Do you think there's gonna be any change orders or anything?
I don't think so, there were a few things that Chad would like completed a little differently than what, and he's going to take care of having them come back and complete them differently. But by and large, I think they did a very good job for us.
If, if, yeah.
But I don't anticipate change orders.
Just define that kind of ledge rock, it's very expensive, so.
Did you see the, did you see them?
Yeah, and it's, I think, I think that we should be very thankful.
And, and then of course-
But I mean, I don't wanna say, I'm not gonna, just like, let's not jinx it. Well, I'm gonna wait till I get the final bill before I say what I wanna say.
But it was okay, Marla. When I went up the first day that they started, I mean, we'd had that rain and-
Oh, they, they, they've done, they've done.
It was unbelievable with the deep watering, and I was so glad Emmett wasn't trying to do it because it was just-
Too much, you know.
Yeah, having run into the issues that they ran in with that, and then still finding ways to take care of it was, uh-
Besides, I mean, they, they probably knew that that could happen, because it's this time of year, but they don't, they didn't know what was unleashed, because we never-
They were excellent to work with, too.
Yes, so, I think, and I think we were not bad to work with, because we allowed-
Emmett helped them out, yeah.
You know, when you can leave something shut down for a little bit, it was a little inconvenient, but saved the town tons of money.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Tons of money, so.
People were quite cooperative. I did have a couple people that were not happy with me, but by and large, people understood. I'm so glad that it's, we're on the other side of it.
Yeah, it's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
So when we get that final bill, and we can announce to everybody what it is,
Yeah.
that would, it's gonna be a good day to get excited.
And I think you can have a little party up on the bridge.
Well, that's what I think.
There you go.
A rotten river cutting.
Yeah.
There you go, that's a good idea.
I, I will say that, uh, it won't truly be done, done, because it's gonna sit there without pavement until fall.
Till late.
So that everything has a-
Settles, yeah.
Gets to settle fully, so that we don't pave it and then immediately have cracks and other problems. So it's all being done the right way, even though it's not like immediately, right now, it looks perfect, so.
And the guardrails need to be installed.
Yes.
But you know, that might be neat, have a river cutting, in the fall when it's all done.
Yeah, once, once the pavement's done, I think that would be awesome.
Yeah, I think so.
I think Russ can make some refreshments.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
We need a break as well, to put me to work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, some coffee and some tea.
Right, Marla.
I mean, that's gonna last completely.
Coffee, tea and water, it's a blast. Yes.
All right. Uh, that's, that's all I have.
I've never seen how you get the school bill.
Not just a small bill, we get it every month.
They could have just given it to us on better paper, though.
All right, so that leaves the last of it being the minutes.
Okay, Dave, you're up. Cause me and Dee looked at it, we thought they looked fantastic.
All right, so that's the draft meeting minutes.
Dave had a correctionary, told me about it.
I did?
Didn't you send me an email?
I don't think I sent you an email on this, that was the last week, last times.
Oh.
Yeah, as bad as I am.
Don't make it any more trouble.
Okay, well.
So the, one that could have a meaning change, and the board, please correct me if I'm wrong here. Page one, line 28, when talking about the Pillsbury Lake District's project, it was, the suggestion was to be, to put in a crosswalk, rather than the suggestion being to put in a sidewalk.
There's a sidewalk in there?
Yeah.
So that's page one, line 28.
I don't remember writing that.
Jut.
Page one, line 40, which was talking about the birds in Pillsbury Lake Village District. Though I find it hilarious, I believe it should be that the rooster instead of roaster.
Well, how do you know we're not just gonna roast the rooster?
You know, so.
Maybe the roo- roo, yeah, the rooster.
Hey, Russ, who brings this guy?
That, that one, I, I like reading that.
It looked good at the time, we both went right past it.
And then lastly, page two, line 50, was when we were signing the documents, and we had noted that there weren't all of them completely correctly, et cetera, or that we didn't have stuff, so we were gonna get some of it back this meeting from Russ, because Russ wasn't here.
I'm also not the one who made that document, so I felt real weird.
It's noted that the board signed, and I think it should say that the board signed the correctly completed documents, instead of just the board signed the documents.
Corrected, okay.
So it's the board signed the correctly completed documents, is what I think it should be. To clarify that we didn't just sign them, even though they weren't deemed appropriate at the time. That, that's all I have.
That was the aboriginal that we just signed, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. That was the one that I thought was $12,000, it was Karen, $12,000.
Everybody can decimal point.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so that was that. Any other comments, questions, clarifications on minutes? Hearing none, I move that we accept the minutes as amended for May 1st, 2023 Select Board Meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, are we turning it off again? Are we good, do we have to have any non-publics?
We do not need a non-public.
All right, any further comments or questions from the board on anything before we adjourn?
I like all the nice flowering trees out, that's really makes you feel the spring is here.
I move that we adjourn at 7:50.